Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. This is our regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, April 26, 2021. It is 6:07 PM. Let the record show that all board members are present except for Mr. Glenn. If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the board, we have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, Mr. Cook. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. First up this evening, we have several recognitions. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Glass.
Yeah, well, first up, we have Terrific Tigers. We're pleased to recognize our April Terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected to receive this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and also their scholarship. We'd also like to recognize their parents for all they do. So as we call each student forward, we'd like to ask them to stand to be recognized as well.
Almott Roder Elementary, Levi Morris, third grade son of Christina and Daniel Morris. Levi Morris is an exemplary student who has the heart and character to help others without being asked. He also has the creative nature of professional artists. Most importantly, Levi has the drive to never give up and to pursue his passion and goals.
You want to get a picture of him without a mask on?
Oh, sure.
All right. Congratulations.
My answer.
Blanchard Elementary, Riley Harrison, second grade daughter of Amy and Marion Harrison. Riley is a kind, patient, and hard-working student who strives to do her best in all situations. She's always ready to help others and make sure everyone is included. Riley is a truly awesome example of a Blanchard Tiger.
You want to get a picture of him without a mask on?
Yes, please.
You can take that off. Smile.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Clifford Elementary, Jalen Williams, fourth grade daughter of Courtney Davis and Jeremy Williams. Jalen is a wonderful role model in the classroom and respects both teachers and her classmates. She is kind and always willing to help out other students. She's a star student. We're so lucky to have her as a leader at Clifford. Franklin Elementary, Eric Tucker, first grade son of Nikita Moore. Eric is hard-working and helpful. He has a positive attitude in his class and is respectful to his teachers. We're all so proud of you, Eric. Keep up the good work. Hey, Central Middle School, Akitha Diaz, sixth grade, son of Pratiba and Darshaka Diaz. Akitha is a very smart, friendly, honest student who can put a smile on any face. Akitha is a friend of anyone who can count on when help is needed. We're glad to have Akitha roaring here at CMS. Central Junior High School, Max Cairns, eighth grade son of Amy and Paul Cairns. Max consistently comes to class with a readiness to participate in activities, get to work, and follow directions promptly. He's very respectful to both teachers and students. Max is exceptionally kind to fellow students, and it's very impressionable to see his interactions with others. Central High School, Andrea Gutierrez, 12th grade daughter of Susanna and Saul Gutierrez. Andrea is a very hard-working student in class. She's able to find a balance between her classwork and the time she devotes to her extracurricular activities. Andrea is always a kind, welcoming student, and she signs as one of CHS's best.
We have a longer list of recognitions tonight. Yes, please. First up, we have Missouri Scholars, top 100. Brayden Osburn. I don't think Brayden's with us tonight. Outstanding young man, has done amazing things out of high school. Nancy, do you have anything to say about Brayden?
I got to go to the Missouri Top 100 on Sunday, yesterday, in Columbia. And it was a celebration of all the 100 students across Missouri, who gave children. So I was like, there was Brayden in his chair, and I'm in her mother's. What ended up in front of the celebration. And Brayden's involved in football, soccer, baseball. But he's had a baseball game tonight, along with the second-class freshman.
That's outstanding. Congratulations. And of course, he also received the National Merit Commended finalist for Cape Central. I mean, he just keeps, the young man just keeps racking up the awards. That's better. All right. Next up, we have the Distinguished Student Leader, Missouri Association of Student Councils, Toby Glenn, Senior Student Body President. Congratulations, Toby. Chris McDonald, your picture taken.
Oh, we lost.
We lost Kristin.
It's ours first.
Congratulations. All right. Now we have the Air Force JROTC Colonel Gooden. You hear? Colonel Gooden's done some amazing things since he began the JROTC program, and I just can't say enough good things about Colonel Gooden. He's started this program from infancy. We have right at 85 cadets now. They're doing things from the drill team to marksmanship and even cybersecurity. And they've done an outstanding job in just the short three years that they've done this program. I'm just so amazed at what they do. One of the individuals, the cadets tonight, Olivia Gargani from CHS. Olivia's the winner of the 2021 Lidos Steam Expressions Competition. This was a new competition this year created by Lidos, which is an American Defense Aviation, IT, and biomedical research company. The Steam Expressions Competition was open to high school students to create a logo design, and Olivia won that. She also won with that, a $1,000 check that I'm happy to present to you tonight. Let's get a picture.
That's worth a picture.
That's right.
I'm sure he never keep the check, though.
I want to say hi. I was in the picture.
I'm taking your pictures tonight. Can you tell we have a month left?
Got it.
Hold on a second. Let me introduce you real quick. The Air Force JROTC also, their Flying Tigers took home the title as the top cyber patriot team in the state of Missouri. The cyber patriot competition put students in charge of securing virtual networks and was created by the Air Force Association to inspire K-12 students toward careers in cybersecurity. Congratulations to Colonel Gooden and the Flying Tigers. Congratulations.
Great challenge.
Unbelievable.
Dr. Glass, are you in the picture? I'm sorry. It just looked kind of funny.
I didn't know.
Great, thank you.
You'll say a few words?
Is this on, or should I just? Unmuted? There we go. Is this on now?
Yes.
All right. My name is Cadet Ethan Glenn. I'm the Squadron Commander with the Cape High School Air Force Junior ROTC. And behind me, I have Cadet Maxton. He's the Deputy Squadron Commander. Cadet Bisher, she's the Director of Operations. And Cadet Stone, who is the Superintendent of our Squadron. And we're just going to give you guys a quick presentation, a little year in review, if you will, about our program. So a quick overview of what we're going to be talking about today. We're going to be talking about this year's unit goals and performance measurements, our unit wellness, cadet accomplishments, some of the things our cadets have done, such as our community service, our leadership development requirements, our trips, recruiting and retention efforts, school participation by cadets, and cadet enrichment activities. So some cadet accomplishments. As Dr. Glass said, our Cyber Patriot won the Missouri State Title, and in fact, this is the second time that they've done it. We won the Outstanding Organization Award for the 2019 to 2020 school year. We were awarded the VFW Youth Patriotic Award, and participating cadets marched 14 miles and raised over $1,500 for Veterans Relief. So just some things that we've done this year. On the left, you'll see two cadets that volunteered at the Toys for Tots Drive. And on the right, you'll see cadets volunteering to take down the Avenue of Flags. On the left there, you'll see, and this picture was pre-COVID, by the way, that's why there are no masks. You'll see some of the cadets at a recruitment event. And on the right, you'll see one of our leadership retreats where we develop leadership skills for the squadron leaders of that year. And there on the left, as I said, the 14-mile hike, that is some of the cadets participating in said hike. And on the right, you'll also see cadets volunteering at a chili drive. And I'm going to hand things over to Cadet Maxton now.
All right. So some of the academics we do in class, so right now, we're covering survival training. We have one class, fifth, our fifth block period, they are actually earning their geospatial certification. Every Wednesday, we meet in the gym and we perform drill and ceremony, and Fridays are for physical training. And we also work on college and career preparation. So for survival training, we've been doing land navigation, which includes learning how to read maps and learning how to use compasses as well. We've been learning about survival, first aid, whether that's helping yourself in a survival situation or performing first aid on others. Also been learning about basic survival skills such as fire building, cleaning, obtaining food and water, building shelter, and signaling for help. All right, for drill and ceremony, every Wednesday, we dress up in the uniforms, and we meet in the small gym, and we go through drill. This helps teaches our cadets teamwork, leadership, as well as professionalism. We also have drones in class. We have some very cheap drones for beginner pilots, and we have drones going up all the way to a $500 drone with cameras and sensors on it that, to learn about drones and the equipment that comes on drones as well.
I'm Cadet Bisher, and we also have our Rocketry Club, which just got introduced this year. Cadets are given the opportunity to construct and also launch different kinds of rockets. As Jack Maxton said, we also, we're given the chance to earn our geospatial certification this year. And cadets learned about recording map data as well as gaining information and mapping. We have our Cyber Patriot Team, which has been the all-state, which has earned the all-state service title for Missouri, both in 2019 and in the 2020 to 2020 school year. We are also working with a partnership with CMO, and we're hoping to gain some industry mentors. We also have our Marksmanship Team, where cadets participate in air rifle competitions. It's all about precision, and it's governed by the civilian marksmanship program, where we compete against different schools. We have a fall competition season, and we also practice in the spring.
Hello, my name's Cadet Stone, and I'll be talking with you guys on community service. So within the last two years, we've developed over around 1,100 hours of community service, 600 pre-COVID in the 2019 and 2020 school year. This year, we have had over 500 hours of community service with our big events, like Cadet Maxton said earlier, our Toys for Tots event, as well as our Avenue of Flags event. All of our activities within the program are broken up into three different categories. We have our STEM-based programs, we have our Rocktree Club and our Cyber Patriot Team. Our activity-based programs are our Honor Guard, our Marksmanship Team, and our CMO Ropes Course. Our unit-based activities are our award ceremonies and our battalion death march, memorial hike, and our field day. JROTC offers hundreds and thousands of scholarships, some being our ROTC scholarships, our AFJ ROTC-specific scholarships. And this year, our organization has developed our own scholarship, which is the General Seth McKee Scholarship, and is a $1,000 scholarship to a senior who decides they'd like to go to college. As well as our annual award ceremony this year, which is on May 7th at 6:00 PM in Kinder Hall. Within the next few years, we'd like to develop a partnership with CMO to get, to open up more opportunities for cadets in the program, within the pilot program, within our Cyber Patriot program, and with our drone clubs. We'd like to get out in the community a little bit more this year. I know COVID's kind of been restricting us, but we were able to do a lot this year, and we'd like to further that out more. We'd also like to establish more connections with the middle school, the elementary school, and some feeder schools. We'd like to do more activities within our community, and we'd also like to, sorry, math. We have, we'd like to develop a connection with Notre Dame, Saksany, and Jackson to enroll more cadets in the program. And that concludes our presentation.
So if you guys have any questions about what we're looking to do moving forward, or anything that we've done in the past, now would be a great time to ask, and we'll do our best to answer them. All right, well, thank you for having us, guys.
Next up, we have Ms. Amy McDonald, our Foundation Director, who is going to be the recipient of her grant award tonight. Ms. McDonald, do you want to share with the audience what you're getting?
Yes. So I'd like to introduce Judy Cantoni and Skip Smallwood. They're with the Cape Area Community Foundation of the Ozarks. If you don't know, that's one of the people that house our money and help invest our funds. And so we wrote a grant to help our elementary students with math that have fallen behind due to COVID and being out of school. And the amount available for the grant was $10,000, and that was for any nonprofit in this area. And I wrote the grant requesting $10,000, and I am so excited because I did not realize that the $10,000 was all they had to give out. And I was able to get $7,500 to help with our math curriculum. And so we have ordered that curriculum, and we'll be able to do that starting for our summer school students.
Sure.
Yeah, before I make the presentation, just for some of you, you may not be familiar with what a community foundation is. We're basically an arm where people can establish funds, could be an individual, could be a corporation, or an organization like the school district, where we basically invest the funds on behalf of whoever creates the accounts. And then you, in turn, you're in control of those accounts, how you want to disperse that money. So in this case, the public school district here, the foundation, they have counted it correctly. You have eight dedicated funds. These are targeted funds that go to specific areas. And just to give you an idea, in the short time we've been in existence, we were established in 2015 under the leadership of Mo Sanford, who really kind of spearheaded the community foundation. We have 43 now portfolio accounts that have been established, and we have roughly about $731,000 in portfolio assets that are under our control, under the Cape Area Community Foundation. And over the last 15 months, we have actually dispersed over $100,000 worth of grants. That's either monies that we actually had within our CACF, or grants that we were able to obtain and then disperse. And this is like the presentation we're going to make tonight. We're actually able to procure a grant for COVID relief. And so with that, what I'd like to do is go ahead and present Amy with the check for $7,500, and her project, I had to print it off because I didn't remember it all. The project name was Connecting the COVID Disconnect Strategies to Invigorate Math and Close the Learning Gap. And we do have a grant committee that reviews these applications, and we felt like this was one of the top applications we're seeing. And I do want to compliment Amy. She does just a tremendous job whenever there is grants that are available. She looks at them, applies for, and she's, I think, I think we were talking, $34,000 roughly has come through either our local community foundation or through the Community Foundation of the Ozarks. And I would be remiss to forget that we are an affiliate of the Community Foundation of the Ozark. So with that, I would like to go ahead and present this check for $7,500 for Amy for this initiative. So congratulations. I guess I better be correct.
I'm smiling. I'm smiling.
This way, just a little. Oh, you're hiding, don't worry. Sorry. Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All good?
All good.
All right. Well, that was quite a list of accomplishments that our staff and students have accumulated over the last several years of work. And always proud of our students when they achieve high levels of success, and always very grateful to be able to recognize that success. We appreciate you setting that up.
Absolutely.
Next up, did we have any requests to address the board? Okay. Next up are our informational reports. And first up is the Board President's Report. And just a couple of things. One, just wanted to congratulate Paul on his election to the board. And so, welcome aboard. And also wanted to share my appreciation to the citizens of Cape Verde for re-electing me to another term to serve, as well as I appreciate the opportunity to serve as President of the Board again. And Mr. Walker, thank you for agreeing to serve as our Vice President this year. So, maybe you'll be sitting in a seat next to him.
We'll see.
If you choose so. All right. And with that, I do not have any other items, so I will turn it over to the Superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not that anyone's counting, but I think it's important to note that we have less than a month to go before the end of the school year. The last day of school is May 25th. What a ride it's been, and it feels so great to say that we've almost made it. And that's from day one. We opened our doors day one. We were able to stay open the entire school year, and I'm very, very proud of that fact and proud of the faculty and staff's efforts because they went above and beyond. That is, that is the truth. I realize we've just recognized our JROTC program, but I want to say something else about them. The entire $1,500 that they raised is going to the VFW Veterans Relief Fund. They're going to go, it's going to help the veterans in need and definitely a worthy cause in their efforts. I do want to take a moment to encourage our community to take the survey that's out right now regarding the need for workforce and higher education opinions in our area. Right now, we're trying to, we've sent out a survey trying to collect information and data as far as a needs analysis in regards to the 13th Community College, or what's, what other post-secondary opportunities are out there for students not pursuing a bachelor's degree. So, you know, we're looking for those opportunities. And so, that, that survey and that needs analysis is very important to this community and the next steps that we seek to address those needs. So, we're also in our final stages of design and bid documents for Jefferson Elementary School. Bids will go out in May and ready for approval for the June Board meeting. We have been trying to keep a pulse on the bidding climate out there, and so I reached out to a contractor, and they did some mockups, and he said, "We're looking at probably a 10% to 15% increase on estimates," which I didn't think was too bad, given the climate that we're in right now, because I've been hearing horror stories on delivery dates of materials and escalation of, you just go to Menards, you go to Lowe's, you see the material prices just jumping, seems like every day almost. And so, he said, "Right now, we're utilizing 10% to 15%." So, I feel pretty good about that. We're still, we're still a little ways off, but hopefully they hold. And that's, that's all I got tonight.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Glass? All right, next up, we have our program evaluations. In this month, we have guidance and counseling by Ms. Keys, the health services report by Ms. Keys, special services report by Ms. Keys, and our library and media resources by Ms. Turner and Dr. Benyon. Those evaluations were sent out earlier. Had an opportunity to review them. Did anyone have any questions regarding any of those evaluations? Casey? No? All right, next up, we have our academic services report.
Jiggy's going to pass out to you our draft family handbook for the Cub Club after-school programs that we have been working on diligently. The first page is the letter we are going to send out to our community daycares and just letting them know what our plans are, how our program's going to work. As an FYI, we still have a few things to clean up in the handbook, but this is a pretty good draft. We are working with Mandy and our head nurse, Dana Deisher, to make sure that the medical information part, that may have the most changes in it if needed, from what you guys are receiving, just because we're working on that piece. There are some links that are not up yet. It is still our hope to send this out to families in early May. So, we should have, we have some things that we need to work on still, but that is our hope, to be able to send this out. So, you know, if you guys, over the next little bit, have questions about things that are in the family handbook, please feel free to reach out to me, and I will try to do my best to clarify them. Sooner rather than later, so that I can make sure we maybe have a cleaned-up copy when we send it out to families.
Does anyone have any questions? Question I have, so on the theme schedule?
On which page?
Page six. Is that the final one? I know we were discussing different ranges. Is that the final?
The range, the typical monthly rate, that was what I thought was the direction the board wanted me to go at our, when we gave the program. We kind of threw out lots of different things, but that was what I thought we ended on. If I'm mistaken on that, please let me know. Then we took what that ended up, and we prorated August and December, because those are pretty short months. August especially is really only one week next year, so we, that's why those look a little different.
Anyone have any questions? So?
That's it.
All right. Thank you for the update. I'm sure Ms. Dunn is getting anxious to start this program.
Well, she's in the middle of map testing right now, so she's kind of been focused on that, and I've had some help here at Central Office to pull this together.
Well, that was pretty quick turnaround time, so.
Rayan and Martin, the contact tracer, has been helping us with that. She hasn't worked very busy, so we've been able to pull hard and use her to help me pull this together.
Thank you. Next up, we have our IT update. Ms. Janie Russ.
So, I shared with you guys a timeline about Canvas, just to give you an update, because that's, that's my life this semester, is doing Canvas. And so, I thought I'd share kind of our, our kind of long-term plan about Canvas. And so, you see, we've got four different phases, and we're about halfway through Phase One right now. And so, just to kind of give you all an update, we've had trainings for, initial trainings for everybody but CTC, and that's because their professional development days are on a different cycle than everybody else's. But they will have some upcoming after-school trainings. Actually, I think this week is their first one. And so, everybody else has either had one or two trainings so far, and we're still in the, in the beginning stages. But I just wanted to show kind of what some of our, our teachers are already doing. You know, we've got, at the high school, has been my, the biggest user so far. They're really starting to prep and think about everything that they are doing for next year already, and then trying it out with their students. And so, not only that, they're going a little bit above and beyond. We've got some super creative people that I wanted to show you. This is Breida Witt, who's over at Central Academy, in her journalism class. And then, this is Mr. Bizushko over at the library at the junior high, are already starting to get in and doing some crazy things with HTML and adding images and doing all of that. And then at the CTC, we've got our computer teacher, Mrs. Durnberger. And then, my favorite one so far, I'm not going to lie, is Stacy Chikora at the Science Department of High School. She's got GIFs, and this is a GIF of GIFs, and so it's kind of a little fuzzy, but that doesn't really work, apparently. And then, Nikado has already started using it to do some PD at the high school, and he's using Canva on Canvas to do that. And so, just wanted to show you guys some of the mind-blowing things they're already doing, and, you know, really just gave it to them the last couple of months. And so, also wanted to share some of the training tools that, as a part of that Phase One. And we've got some course checklists, just things that, you know, as they're, as they're building things, as they're learning, they can use. And then, we have a growing, right now it's 64 pages, Canvas Resource Guide that has all sorts of stuff about moving things from Moodle, you know, adding Google pieces to it, and then, you know, lots of other learning opportunities after school, as we talked about last time, I think. And so, I just wanted to share those things with you all and give you an update. You guys have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have our Community Teachers Association Report. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to keep it pretty short tonight. You guys have been busy honoring outstanding high schoolers. Yeah. That I'm a little bit biased for, right? Love so many of them that came up here tonight. Three things. One, we honored those who are retiring at a, there's, there was a district meeting of Serta who honored retirees all across the district, including the ones here. So, that was good. We are looking forward to, we'll be attending leadership conferences summer. We are shifting some leadership positions, so that's going to be, I just found out tonight, one really important person is leaving. It's okay. Our secretary, Amber Beard, who's done a whole lot for us. And then, we're still concerned, as I know you guys are, about House Bill, I had to keep the number in front of me, 43 that voted to pass in Senate Education Committee, that's the bill that allows statewide open enrollment. So, that's the other thing MSTA keeps, is keeping its eye on. And so, we continue to hope people will call and write, et cetera, against that bill. So, that pretty much wraps up what MSBA, MSTA has been doing for the last month. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Do you have any fundraisers or any activities coming up?
No, we always have our one fundraiser, and because of COVID, it's usually in the fall, and kind of, that didn't happen. So, we're talking about, you know, what didn't happen this year, and really looking forward to next year. I know we're excited next year, hoping we can get back to our trivia night and back to our, we usually have an educational program that we tried to have, and it just didn't with COVID. We're trying to use video, it just didn't work out. But we are excited that next year, hopefully, all those things will come back and maybe even more, right? They're like, sure, who knows? I'm hoping.
Well, if you ever have events, activities, or awards banquets or anything like that coming up, if you would, let the board know. So, any of us that are so inclined to attend, we would love to do some.
We will. We'll have this again next year, honoring things again this year. And they even did the Serta meeting via Zoom, so it wasn't even, usually there's a banquet, it wasn't even a banquet this year for the regionals, so.
But trivia night's always fun. All right, next up, we have our Treasury Finance Report. Ms. Duda.
Our report tonight is going to be for the month ending March 31st, and I'm going to concentrate on the general fund, which is our main operating fund. March 1st, we started with the beginning fund balance of a little over $22 million. We received $2.5 million in revenues for the month. Expenses were $1.4. $588,000 was transferred to the special revenue fund, which covers our teachers' salaries, leaving us with the ending fund balance of $23.3 million. March is also when we make our bond payments. So, you'll notice under debt service fund, we have expenses of $3.9 million. Those are our bond payments that we make twice a year. The cash and investment detail, where the money is held at different banks, is listed below. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for our finance report. Next up, we have our Support Services Report. Mr. Crowell.
Good evening. Before you, you have a financial handout from our CEP program, looking at the last month that we've made a claim. You can see the numbers there comparative to the three previous years. One of the things I want to note, while there was an increase, is if you look at the days that we're in the program of March this year compared to March last year, you'll recall that's when we dismissed school, back on the 17th of last year, and then we shifted gears and did our feeding program a little bit differently with all the various waivers that DESI and USDA allowed us to, to do that. So, currently, you're seeing our up-to-date CEP numbers. Just a reminder, on CEP, we're going to run the numbers again next year, because it's a four-year cycle. This is ending our, our fourth year in it. So, we will do that again next year, and that'll be coming before you then. Dr. Glass already updated you on many of the projects that we have around the district concerning when bids will be going out for the Jefferson Project, and what possible expectations on there when those come back in. Other than that, no further report unless you have any questions or concerns.
No Crispito update this month?
I didn't want to steal the thunder from the Crispito Food, the foundation with their, that's right, with their drive. I'll let Amy take care of that.
So, if there's no further questions for Ms. Crowell, we'll move on to our board reports. First up, we have MSBA Delegate Report.
I attended the Legislative Forum on April 12th, and school board members from all across the state were there. And there were a lot, some really good conversations about some of the legislative bills right now. Some of the, they talked a lot about some of the things that MSBA had concerns about, which included some of the stuff that she mentioned, SB 55, I'm not going to remember all the numbers. I sent out some stuff about it, some charter school stuff. And it was, it was interesting because we also were able to hear about, from some of the bigger communities that have kind of had to deal with some of the charter school, some of the issues that, that have come up with charter schools. Transportation is a big deal. Students with disabilities, because charter schools can sometimes say, "We're not going to take those kids." And so, that impacts like the percentage of students with special needs that are in the public schools. Sometimes that increases as other kids leave to attend the charter schools. So, that was really interesting. I sent out some stuff to the board with some information about some of the different bills and where MSBA stands on that. And then, just some information about accountability for public schools, what public schools are required to do as far as accountability and charter schools, and it's a big difference. That's all.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Fairley? No? All right. Thank you for attending that. Appreciate the information.
The other thing I would say is they, they kept encouraging people, sorry, I had one more thing. Just really contact, contact your senators or representatives and talk to them, talk to them, talk to them, talk to them. I said that was really, really important.
From vast experience, they do listen.
Yeah.
All right. Legislative report.
And just to glom onto that, there's obviously a lot of activity going on. Several of the bills are already mentioned, the 543 bill, the House Bill 253, which is actually interesting because it's approving redistricting for school boards down in Springfield, so it's actually going to go through, it looks like. So, some pretty interesting stuff. So, again, legislative voice breaks a lot of that stuff. Talk to your senators, talk to the representatives, educate yourself on these bills, look at them. Senate Bill 152, which actually passed as a modification to the MOST program, which is just a savings investment, it's like a 529. It passed the Senate, then went to the House, and they added 12 amendments to it in the omnibus fashion they're doing right now. So, now it's a smorgasbord that covers everything from allowing parents to record IEP meetings to requiring the teaching of cursive handwriting. So, even though it might pass one side... So even though it might pass one side, keep paying attention, keep yelling and screaming, keep learning, keep educating yourself on it. And then Senate Bill 55, which is obviously the big one we've talked a lot about, it's on their informal schedule, it's not, so it could drop at any point in time. So, and again, just stay active.
All right. Anyone have any questions, comments for Mr. Cook? No? Thank you for the update. Next, we have our Cape Public Schools Foundation Update Report.
Not sure I need that. Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick with this. So super excited that we received that grant. And I could not do that without Rayanne Alper, so I, I want to throw her props there. I could not do that without her, so I appreciate Rayanne. My golf tournament is May 21st. It's a Friday afternoon. It's at Cape Country Club. And right now, I believe I have 18 teams, which since I'm an afternoon only, but I did bring information if anybody wants it. We have information as far as sponsorships and if you want to put a team in. So I'll leave that up here. And then Crispitos. We sold 853 dozen, which is over 10,000 Crispitos, 10,260, I believe. At $10 a dozen. And so we, we raised probably about $5,000 on that after expenses of the Crispitos and the Ziploc bags. So super excited about that. And that's going to be an annual fundraiser. So anyway, that's really all I have.
Anyone have any questions? All right. So next, we will move on to approval of consent agenda items. This month, we have minutes of previous meetings, March 22nd, 2021, and then April 15th, 2021, approval of payment of bills and summer school application. And those were all sent out previously. If I need a motion to approve?
Some.
Ms. Ritter, Dr. Fegley, any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. And next up, we have old business items and discussion of Cape County Health Department COVID-19 response. Dr. Glass.
Thank you. I know the last time we met, we had some discussion over our COVID response and our plan. And I told you every month we'd revisit that up until the end of school. So what I've done is taken a lot of input, a lot of information, used a lot of data to come up with some revisions to our plan, if you will, that I'm planning on implementing and wanted to bring to your attention. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on this. Starting May 3rd, which is, we'll go through this week and then starting, I guess Monday, May 3rd, all elementary schools may drop the mask mandate as long as the students remain in the same cohort. One, if they're in commingled or mixed cohorts, it's too hard to contact trace. And, and I don't want to quarantine multiple students over just a lack of judgment. So I am going to move forward with all elementary schools dropping their mandate as long as we're the same cohort.
Yes, good.
As far as the middle school is concerned, they are included with the secondary because they change classes. And so it's no, there's no good way to monitor that transition. And, and so my recommendation for the secondary level is to maintain the mask because as I look at the high school and I look at these seniors who have missed out on their junior year, for them to miss out on their senior year and all the, the extracurricular activities that go along with that. And then we're talking graduation, we're talking prom, we're talking, you know, the end of year award ceremonies, so on and so forth. I find it prudent to stick with the mask mandate at the secondary level, including the CTC. Because I feel for those kids and I don't want to be that superintendent who goes, walks up to a parent and says, you have to miss graduation because you're quarantined. Or you have to miss the prom because you're quarantined. Or because they contracted at prom, I couldn't contact trace and I've got to quarantine all those kids from graduation. And so I did a lot of soul searching on that. And that's kind of where, where I came, the conclusion I drew after looking at the data. And the data is, you know, there's not a lot of great data out there. There's a lot of mixed numbers and different things that, you know, some, some people say this, some people say that. But at the end of the day, I want our kids to experience their senior year. And, and, and not only the seniors, but also the freshmen, sophomores, and so on and so forth, and the end of year activities. So unless there's objections to that, that is my plan moving forward. I wanted to obviously bring that to you for discussion. If I need to tweak this, modify it in some manner, some fashion, I'm open. But that, that's what I see moving forward. As far as graduation is concerned, graduation right now is scheduled for the stadium. And as long as we get to hold it in the stadium, it is open. That means there's no limit. We collectively made this decision that there is no limit to graduation. So if, that is an outdoor facility. I think the CDC is going to come up with a recommendation that as long as you're outdoors, you know, the masking mandate is going to relax. And so we're kind of going to follow that suit and allow the stadium to be at full capacity if, if that's, you know, if those people, amount of people show up. If it's indoors, if the graduation ceremony is indoors, and we're talking like if we, if there's inclement weather and we have to move it to the junior high, because we had to make this decision early. So if there wasn't this idea that if we can't have it in the stadium, we can move it to the Show Me Center, because that decision, that boat set sail a long time ago. We had to make that decision upfront and Seymour wasn't sure where they were headed. So we had to make the decision on that. So that's why we decided on, on the stadium. And then if inclement weather struck, then we would take it to the junior high, which is our biggest indoor facility that we have on campus. And so if that be the case, we can roughly house 2,000 people in there. So we're, we're going to stick with our four tickets per graduate if inclement weather strikes. So I think that, that covers graduation and that covers all of our indoor activities. You know, we, we don't feel like there's going to be a real huge problem with other indoor activities and capacity levels. Graduation definitely going to be the top one.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Some of the mailings that went out earlier said at graduation, if it's in the stadium, that a kid could only have six people attend. Is it still six or it just?
No, that's, that's what I'm saying. We changed that. We came to that collective decision. Since it's an outdoor facility, we can go ahead and open it up.
Okay.
As far as, so at the end of this school year, my recommendation to my administration is going to be that summer school, we go back to a normal year.
Good.
And that would be mask free. You know, we're going to take the same, some of the same safety precautions, washing your hands, using sanitizer, you know, making sure that we're extra thorough in our cleaning and things of that nature. But let's see whether, let's use that as our pilot for summer school in, in how we proceed with the opening of the regular school year. As far as next year's concerned, which is 21, 22 school year, I'm hoping that we are back to normal. And that's where, you know, I'm very optimistic that we will be. But if those numbers start to rise and we start to get another cycle of this, we may find ourselves having a different conversation. But that is my goal, is with our numbers where they're at, which are almost non-existent within the school district. I feel like we're safe in, in doing that, at least with the data that we have. So that's kind of where I'm headed. I'll open it up for discussion. Yes, you've already done that, Mr. President.
So question, Dr. Glass. So have you spoken to any of the other superintendents or the folks from the other schools? I know some people have gone unmasked a little sooner. Kelly High School, Saxton, he had a less rigid policy. We talked a little bit about this at my swearing in two Thursdays ago.
Yeah.
But I know there's a lot of folks that have reached out to me just concerned, saying they'd love to get rid of it across the board, recognizing, and I think, based on the data I asked for, I think, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, Dr. Krista Turner, I think the last positive we had in the district was mid-March. And so I think based on the graphs, I'm covered by, but maybe I missed the charts.
I just forwarded those on solid, Jamie, or Dr. I didn't.
Our last, our last positive case was, I think it was two weeks ago.
March 23rd?
Yeah. It was a.
But that was the return date.
Yeah. So, so it was somewhere in the middle, I don't have credit.
Sure, sure, sure.
But that's been our only positive case, where we've also had to quarantine several people because of that. Part of the issue is, is that they have, they've changed mask requirements, but they haven't changed the quarantine rate with close contact or positive. And that's part of the balance that we have to kind of find. Now, if they would change those, then that would be a, a different situation for our kids and for our, our staff, but they haven't changed that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Who is they, when you say that, who is they?
CDC.
Okay.
Is who it is. Now, they have changed it from six feet to three feet with close contacts, but they haven't changed everything to where we can't, we still have to quarantine. We still have a process for quarantine. I think we sent you all that information. The questions that I think that Matthew, I think you asked.
That was another set of questions, I think, just as far as across the board, what the schools are allowing and not allowing. But some of Paul's questions were more to, you had a whole different set of questions, I believe.
Well, my question for mostly, obviously, for those who saw them were around, you know, rates that we're seeing in the community, what other schools are doing. Because again, I don't, I don't envy Dr. Glass' situation or anybody who's making these choices on behalf of other people, because they're consequential. And ultimately, you know, the idea of erring on the side of caution seems prudent when nothing bad happens. But the question is, would something bad have happened had you not done that? And I think that's the impossible thing to know. And so if some of these schools are kind of opening up, one of my objectives is to figure out, have we, the lag time isn't very much is part of the problem, right? There's a few schools like Woodland, who's not had a mask mandate at all. I think Saxton, if I remember correctly, had a less rigorous mask mandate at different parts when they were in passing times, when they weren't in cohorts. They wouldn't wear masks or did wear masks when they were in passing times and things like that. But trying to figure out, how do you make sense of it all? Because to the comment you made, Dr. Glass, I think, depending on which side, I know there's people who are very firmly on one side or the other, you can find data that supports your argument, no matter what your argument is. And so I don't think it's totally cut and dry and there's risks on both sides for people who choose to say, I'd like to keep people unmasked because protecting large gathering events or about specialized moments, I, I can understand that argument. But for those who say, you know, if I'm wearing a cloth mask, I'm not really doing very much anyway, and I've been vaccinated, I've had COVID, and so don't be scared of me, I've got antibodies, I'm not going to give it to you. And when you look as the community opens up, you know, I'm at the sports class two weekends in a row with kids and there's 1,000 people there and there probably weren't, and I didn't count, but a very thin number wearing masks. And you just wonder, is the exposure going to be in the community versus in the school? And how do, how do we navigate the fact that, you know, the school might be the only place some of these folks are wearing masks? And, and that's a personal choice, it's me. And so trying to figure out where to land and why we're landing there, I don't know. It, it's, it's challenging for sure.
If you look at the percentages on the chart that was given to us here.
Yeah.
You can see the percentages of the positive rates, which you can see Woodland, and those had a higher percentage of positive rates due to not, due to not wearing masks.
And they did not have a higher rate.
So we, what we looked at, the data that you looked at.
Right.
Was sending schools to Cape Public Schools, which sends to the CTC.
Right.
So we looked at that data, that's what we looked at. And that was our contact tracer contacted each district to get that data.
Right. And it's hard because we know that all of that's underreport, I mean, everybody's underreported, right? Because the reality is there's lots of kids who are asymptomatic and so nobody tested. I mean, at some point, this is all kind of a crap shoot from the standpoint that we try to make good choices and be productive of people. And again, I don't pretend to have the answer to it. But I think ultimately, you know, vaccines are available for those who want to choose that pathway and extremely high efficacy rates of people from the vaccines that are out there in the market right now in the U.S. We're blessed to have pre-distribution in this market for teachers and other adults that want to get it. You know, we've got a large collection of PPE, I think, in the district for people who want to use masks, whether it's, you know, OR masks, whether it's N95 masks for those who might have a compromised family member or whatnot. I think we have resources to be able to deal with it from a personal responsibility standpoint, recognizing that the risk is that if, if you choose to go down the pathway where you, you get exposed to COVID-19, and ultimately that means you miss graduation or you miss prom or you miss another thing, that's, that's a known quantifiable risk for individuals who are, you know, choosing the direction they want to go. And I guess it's hard to, the end of the school year to me is somewhat arbitrary, but you always have to pick a point in time and say, as of, we can't go backwards, we can only go forwards. And so I just want to raise kind of those concerns because I just, some of this feels so arbitrary to me, recognizing it's just a point in time and we feel like we're almost the finish line. But I wonder, based on some of the data, the differences aren't very stark from, you know, Woodland, which is a much smaller school, and I don't know their setup and I, and I won't pretend to. But when you look at some of the percentages, they're firstly identical to schools that have been masking the whole time in some of that data. In the 7%, 6.9, 6% maybe at Jackson, and I think Woodland was in the eight, if I remember correctly. But I don't know, I just, I would felt remiss if I didn't say some things based on folks who've reached out to me for sure. Because I think there's a lot of people who are obviously interested in this and, and everybody wants COVID-19 to go away, but it's, it's not going away. And it's going to be here next year, it's going to be here potentially the year after and for a long time. So figuring out, you know, how do we make sure we navigate it the most brilliantly possible is obviously all of our objective.
So arbitrary or not, you can't deny the fact that in past years, in fall and winter, we've had upwards of 20 and 30% of our student population out with influenza. This year, we have had very little. So, and without having kids that are showing up, you know, people try to say, well, they're counting those COVID numbers. No, our COVID numbers are zero. So kids aren't getting influenza and they're not getting COVID and they're staying in school. And that's our main goal, is to make sure our students stay in school and get graduated and move on, so.
So did you just set a precedent to mask our kids forever because you think the masks kept them?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. No.
Please, please, please don't claim that the masks kept your kids from being sick.
Something has kept them from not getting sick. And I'm not going to sit up here and debate it, but the numbers are the numbers. And every year, we see anywhere from 20 to 30% of our student population that are out with influenza. And this year, we have had, well, negligible, I mean, very negligible numbers. And we've been able to keep our students in class the entire year, where other students or other school districts can't say the same thing. So whether the mask is the issue or the social distancing is the issue, or keeping kids within classrooms when they're doing lunches, I mean, something is keeping our students healthy and keeping them in class learning. And that's all I'm trying to say, is that the presence by the administration and the, and the teachers and the, the staff within our, our schools are keeping our kids safe and they're keeping them healthy and they're keeping them in class learning. So that's all I'm trying to say.
But I think that's a valid point. I mean, again, I, I think there's a lot of things happening all at once, right? So I hope if any guys out there hear my voice, I hope if men bathroom hand washing goes up by a moderate amount of percentage, it would be a huge women COVID. Women, you'd be frightened everywhere. But I think, you know, initially, I mean, in all seriousness, I think COVID rates among men were higher than women. And I joked in my life and said, yeah, if you've ever been in like a sporting event and watched guy after guy after guy walk out and I wash their hands, you're like, well, yeah, guys aren't pretty good at hand washing. And so I'm sure this is part of the problem. But I think, I think we're learning things about how to protect ourselves against all sorts of communicable things, I hope, you know, with hand washing and just being prudent. And I hope for parents who say, if my kid is sick, I, I wonder if part of the chile is that a parent whose kid is sick or runny nose and coughing, like, they don't want to send that kid to school because ultimately, like, everybody thinks they have COVID. And so ultimately, when sick kids don't show up where well kids are, sick kids get quarantined and well kids don't. And that's kind of how it's always historically worked. And now we're kind of theoretically quarantining well people, which is just a different paradigm. And so I don't have, again, I don't have the answer. I think there's a lot of things going on at the same time. But it certainly isn't, isn't as simple as anyone.
And I picked summer school, obviously, because I wanted to get past the major events, end of the year events. And, and I don't want to see another class have to miss out on those end of the year events. And the way the, the health department is and the CDC are now, I have, if they come in contact with a positive, if they're within the certain feat, I have to quarantine. And I don't want to meet that person, that superintendent, have to go up to that parent and say, I'm sorry, you can't attend your tuition.
Do you have a sense, Dr. Glass? Do you have a sense, Dr. Glass or Dr. Vinyan, on how the schools that are using kind of a more liberal approach to face masks, how they're navigating CDC guidelines or, you know, how, I know different schools kind of do different things as far as that goes, but do you have a sense of how people are doing that, or how we would do it in summer school?
Well, you know, we have the luxury of having our own testing site. I think a lot of them don't test and I, I think they're not being as transparent as, as what I think we are. You know, we, we have a pretty good handle on, on the students that are walking through our doors and staff members for that matter. We've got, we've partnered with a local health clinic here that administers our tests, so it's not, it's very accessible to us. And so I think that's, that's kind of knocked down some barriers, at least when K public school is concerned. So whether that's the whole answer or not, I don't know. But I think, I think we, we err on the side of transparency as far as our numbers.
Could I say something? I don't know. May I, may I just, as the communications director, our procedure is that we don't allow comments. We have to sign up ahead of time to speak. So I just want to bring that on the line of attention. So you don't have to comment. That's right. You can sign up to speak, but you have to, we have a deadline for it. We'll make sure that you guys have that information. Thank you.
We get most of the questions.
Other questions? All right. There's no business this month. Does any board member have any information or proposals? No? All right. Anything else, Dr. Glass?
That's it.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Cook, Dr. Keglin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
None.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.